Sure, have, we have more than a quorum at this point, so we can call the meeting to order at 6:10. I want us just to take a quick look at the agenda for tonight's meeting. I would like to, I don't know if we need to formally adopt this just because it's a change in order, but I would like for us, we'll go through the minutes, but I want us to change things a bit so that we put the updates actually before the financial report and the facility agreement. The rationale for this is that we have a lot of finance-related information to get to, and we don't want to rush through it. Do have some important academic information to get through as well that we will take some time to do a review of via Deli Ness, thank you very much, but we will also, because it reflects our latest round of testing data, we will review that in more depth in the education and accountability meeting, and then also again in the July meeting. So for now, I just want to kind of give folks a heads up, do we have to ratify the change in the order with a vote?
No.
I think it's okay. Okay, I just wanted to give everybody a heads up before, essentially, we're putting the academic information first, and then we'll start to get into the financial related votes, which are going to comprise the bulk of the meeting. Okay, everybody, thank you, welcome. Welcome for new folks and welcome also to everybody returning. First order of business is going to be the approval of our May meeting minutes, which I sent out on Friday, and I hope that you've all had a chance to take a look at. Are there any additions or edits to these meetings if they were written?
Ironically enough, I have a correction.
Okay.
Since I sent them to you. Ms. Chang's name is mistakenly included. So that needs to be struck and corrected.
That's fine. So Margarita's, Margarita Chang's name will be moved from the line that says trustees absent and down to employees. Well, actually, will just be struck altogether because she wasn't able to attend. Anything, any other changes from anyone? Going once? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the May minutes with the one correction that was just mentioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Thanks, everybody.
I'll abstain.
Okay.
I wasn't, I wasn't at the meeting.
You weren't at the May meeting, that's right. And I apologize, I know that I had sent these out to everybody a few minutes ago via email, my apologies, but I also, we need to vote on the June 11 interim meeting minutes. So if you have not had a chance to take a look at those, please take a couple of minutes now.
This was our special meeting last week to transact some real estate business, so their meetings are brief, the minutes rather are brief.
A second.
Okay, well, let's make, does anybody have any edits? No? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the minutes as written. David? In a second. Okay, all in favor of approving minutes?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, wonderful. Great. So as I mentioned earlier, I'd like to go ahead and put, bring the updates, which are listed on the agenda under number four here up ahead, and these generally do include all of the the board bullets that were sent to us. But I would like to, unless folks have questions, actually give the floor first to Deli Ness to go over the DRA EDL data portion of that update, which again, we will go into more depth of a review on in the July meeting and in our education committee meeting.
Thank you. Thanks, Michael. Hi, everyone. All right. So as you all know, in March, we had to physically close down the building due to COVID. During that time was when we were also supposed to start doing our map assessments to gather more data on how students were progressing academically at the school. Unfortunately, the closures stopped us from being able to do that. Another piece of data that we collect at the school is an assessment called DRA, and in Spanish, it's the EDL. It is a reading assessment that's done individually with students. It's done usually three times a year to see how students are progressing in terms of their reading level. This test, as I said again, is a test that's conducted one-on-one. It's usually done in person, we've never done it in a remote setting. However, we did want to gather as much data as we potentially could during this remote learning phase. So we did an attempt to try to conduct the assessment virtually. And so we scheduled one-on-one meetings with all of our students, the teachers did, and they did both the DRA and the EDL virtually. So I do want to just preface, right, that this assessment typically done in person with the teacher and the student present, and we tried to do this in a remote setting. Can you go to the next slide, Michael? Thank you. So as I said, the DRA EDL is a one-on-one assessment, you sit down with the child, you read a book at a particular level, if the child passes that level, you continue to go on to the next level until you've reached where the child is in their reading capabilities. And that gives you either a letter or a number that shows you where the student is at. Our students were supposed to take this assessment in April, the second time around. Again, COVID happened, we didn't get to do it in April, but we took the month of June, end of April, end of May, beginning of June, to try to assess our students virtually. So again, we didn't get to do it in April, but we went ahead in June at the end of the year to see if we can gather data virtually remotely to see, get an idea of where our kids were ending the year. So in order to put this data together, there are two sort of different points that we're looking at. I looked at the data and I asked myself, what percentage of students met or exceeded our April target? So the target that we had in April that they did not get tested, how many students met that target? That middle-of-the-year target? And then I looked at the data a second time, and I looked at what percentage of students met the end-of-year target. So when we look at the data, we'll look at those two different numbers, how many kids met the April target, and how many kids met the end-of-year target? And then after that, we'll discuss what are our next steps that we're developing and that we're thinking about in response to the data that we do have. Michael, can you go to the next thing? So one thing that I am super proud of and that I just want to point out and just commend our staff, we were able to successfully test 98% of our student population, which is a huge task, considering again that this was done virtually, that it was scheduling one-on-one meetings with families, usually more than just one meeting because you were testing in two languages. It was a pretty time-consuming task, and I just want to thank both our parents and our teachers. Just really also just want to shout out our parents, who took the time out to make sure that they made the time to sit down with their students, get them online, and get them assessed with their teachers, so that's a big achievement. We could go to the next slide, and here are the datas, okay. So on this slide, what we see is what percentage of students met or exceeded their April targets, and I broke it down by class and by grade level. So in the kindergarten data, as you can see, the red is the Spanish EDL data, and in white, we have the English DRA data. So in K.A., for example, 53% of students met their April target in Spanish, and 82% met their April targets in English. In total, for kindergarten, 64% of students met their Spanish EDL reading targets for April, and in English, 79% of students in kindergarten met their DRA reading target for April. In first grade, in Spanish, 64% of students met their April targets, and then in English, 76% met their April targets. So if we go to the next. Now, the numbers dressed, they reduce when we talk about end-of-year targets. So this is where kids should have been by the end of the year. Now, I want us to remember major disruption to the school year, and although we've continued with remote learning, both live and recorded sessions, it's definitely had an impact on the learning. So for end-of-year targets, in kindergarten, K.A. met 35%. 35% of the class met their end-of-year target, K.B. 14%, K.C. 33%, and K.D. 33% as well. In English, you have the numbers there, 35% in K.A., K.B. 24%, K.C. 52%, and K.D. 44%. In first grade, and we've talked about this before, this is the cohort that came in in first grade with particular academic challenges. In Spanish, 1A, 43%, less than 1% in English. That is our ICT classroom, where we have our students with IEPs and majority English language learners. 1B, 71% in Spanish met their end-of-year target, 50% in English, and then 1C, 64%, 29% in English. So do we want to keep going?
Would you go back to the previous slide for a second?
Sure. Another point there that I just didn't clarify, that reading gain where you see a decimal point, point 26, point 46, 1.0 would represent one year's worth of growth. And so those were the reading gains for each of the individual classrooms.
On my screen, the totals are cut off, never mind.
It's because of the pictures or...
No, no, it's fine. Thank you. Can I just ask about what we're seeing as the general, are you going to go into the general causes, you think, for the change in these numbers between April and end of year?
I don't know, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, it's fine. I think that we've seen growth, as we can see between beginning of year and now and what we expected for April, where we see the reduction, the down spiral is with our end-of-year targets, right? And so I think that there are a number of things that play into this. Mainly, I think that our school closure caused a lot of learning to be lost that should have been happening. Remote learning can never compare to in-person learning, and so although we've adopted pretty quickly to the remote learning, and I think that we offered a pretty rigorous program remotely for kindergarteners and first graders, the ability to work with children in person, to do small group, to get all of our students at all of the virtual sessions proved to be a challenge. And so it definitely doesn't compare into having school in person with students. We talked about earlier in the year the map data and that sort of benchmark data that we got of our students' performance, and we knew that there was a lot of growth to be made. And I think that these numbers in terms of the April targets shows that there's definitely was growth, and we were on the path to growth. But it was difficult for us to meet those end-of-year targets as the school then shut down and the challenges that that presented in itself.
Thanks, Deli Ness, I just think it was worth pointing that out, and really the point I wanted you to to make, which you have, is that these numbers are showing good growth in April, and and we're seeing a lot of good work there. And we all know what happened after, you know, between then and now, so I just wanted to...
Yeah. So, yeah, thank you, David. So, Michael, if we can go to the next steps, thanks. So in terms of what we're doing to respond to the data that we have, number one, we're going to be conducting summer school for our students. And so the learning continues throughout summer, we are not shutting down. We have 65 of our students that we're recommending for summer school. That's a little bit over half of our students that we want them to come back to summer school and continue their learning. We will be providing both reading in English and Spanish and math instruction throughout the summer. The program starts July 6. We also have started a partnership with TNTP, which is the New Teacher Project, and they are going to be working with myself and the instructional leadership team to start putting together professional development and training for our Summer Institute for Teachers. And so I'm really excited about that because there's going to be a deep emphasis focused on literacy in particular, and how kids learn how to read in two different languages. And I think that that's going to be really vital professional development for our teachers. I put it in here, but this is something still under discussion, but there's a possibility for a potential partnership with the University of Chicago on reading assessments and teacher training. That's something that we're looking into as well. As you all know, we're hiring an extra intervention teacher to join the school year for the 2021 school year. And a big focus of that teacher is going to be working with our incoming second graders, who are more struggling cohort, but also across the different grade levels. And we're already working on like our summer PD calendar and our PD calendar for the rest of the academic year with a really big emphasis on data collection and analysis, and how our data informs instruction. So we have a number of days even in the summer where teachers are going to be really analyzing all of these reading assessments and thinking through what are the trends that we're seeing? What are the letter sounds that our kids are missing? They'll be reassessed as soon as kids come back in, so that we can have really targeted instruction as to where we're seeing the gaps in our students. So those are just some of the next steps. I didn't add here, but we have what we're calling an acceleration team that we've put together that's myself, the instructional leadership team, Michael Roberto, of coming up with an academic plan that regardless of what scenario happens in the fall, there is a plan for scenario A, B, and C in terms of just not, we like to say acceleration because it's not just getting our kids on grade level, but how can we accelerate the learning so that they get on great level and continue to learn at their appropriate grade that they're at? We don't want, we don't want to just do remediation work, although we know that's necessary. It's how do we get our kids on great level and above great level?
One of the things, just let me add, thank you, Deli Ness, that the finance committee already knows, is that we have been able to shift needed resources, even in a time where we are tonight presenting a very conservative budget. We've been able to shift as much resources, financial resources, to the instruction of children, because that's what we're here to do. So the points about partnerships with TNTP, that's a very big, important partnership we'll talk about shortly. And of course, hiring the interventionist, an additional interventionist for our second graders is another strategic move made so that our kids would have all the resources necessary to get up to speed as quickly as possible.
Michael, I think there's one more slide. So just some additional academic updates. As I said, summer school is set to begin July 6, and it'll run through the month of July through July 30. We have four of our current teachers who will be running the program and conducting summer school with our students. We have final report cards being emailed to parents, and those go out on this, this Friday. And then just an update on hiring, we've filled five of the eight instructional positions that we have open. So there's three positions remaining to fill, and that's our second grade lead teacher position, a second grade special education teacher, and the intervention teacher that we just mentioned. And as you all know, we're working with a amazing recruiter, and we have a number of teachers in the pipeline that we continue to interview, and I think we're in a really good place where we're making progress. And I foresee us being fully staffed for next year. Any questions?
I think we are good for now. We'll, again, we'll break this apart a little bit more in our July meeting. But thank you so much, Deli Ness, for all of the info, and in general, for all of the tremendous work that you guys have put in this year and are continuing to put in.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Roberto, I think you want to...
Yeah, just very briefly, I wanted to remind the parents that are present and also all of our board membership that this Saturday is our last parent meeting, we call them caer, Cafe con Panduce, and it is an opportunity for parents to have their voice of customer, their voices heard by our administrative team. At that workshop, which starts at 10 o'clock on Saturday virtually, we will be able to offer teachers and Deli Ness, Michael and myself, plans for the summer, plans for returning to school, all of the questions that are burning in the hearts of our folks. More than that, listen to them, to be able to be present to some of the concerns that they have and respond in real time to some of those issues. We got a lot of good news, and we want to share that with our parents. But I want to invite all the board as well, should you want to join us as well for that meeting.
Thank you, Roberto. Okay, are there any questions on any of the additional content from the board bullets for this month? Again, I'm just trying to kind of, just toward the start of the financial items of the agenda.
I'm all right.
Okay. All right, it looks like we are set to go. All right, shall we start with the financial report?
Sure. You want to queue it up? Is there a PowerPoint?
We don't have the PowerPoint for the monthly financials.
That's the May financials.
I can pull up the financial itself if you'd like, Joaquin.
Great, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. If need be, I can just talk them through this particular portion, are you having problems?
Would you please just take him a minute?
Okay, basically, with respect to the May financials, they're essentially the same as the month prior. The only difference is that we had projected a net surplus of $252,000, and that amount was conditioned on us receiving a contribution from Friends in the form of some of our facility assistants. However, the process is prolonged partly because of landlord, it's an involved process. So unfortunately, we were not able to receive any contributions from Friends because Friends has only been, shall we say, organized, incorporated, and up and running, and we'll be discussing this next as of this month. So as a result, our net income has gone from $252,000 to $80,000, okay? So starting next month, or starting the next year, the fiscal year, again, I'll go through the Friends with you again, we will be able to get those kinds of support as we need, okay? So I think that is really it. I mean, the numbers are so tight. All the metrics are fine. Okay? So, and the reason I'm sort of pushing us, because we have a lot to talk about. Okay, Michael, let's go ahead and queue up for the discussion of Friends. So to, to go back to our last conversation, when we had our interim board meeting, we had discussed it in terms of the context of our sublease. As you will recall, the school was in direct contract with the landlord for the renting of the building. So we recall the tenant, and they were called the landlord. We've now interposed an entity called Friends of, such that Friends of is now in direct contract with the landlord, so that it's the tenant, and the landlord's still the landlord, the owner, and we now have a relationship between Friends where we are the tenant or the subtenant, and they are our landlord or sublandlord. We discussed the rationale for this arrangement, and in the context of that meeting, we discussed the relationship between Friends of and LEAP. So as we promised, and I want to say thanks to David, my newfound friend, we worked through trying to develop highlights of a memorandum of understanding that would govern in concept the relationship between the two entities. Roberto and Cliff have provided much guidance, so I'm going to just run it by you. The idea is that this MOU, and it really is a proper document. Sometimes you would say, why isn't it in a contract, why isn't it in agreement? A memorandum of understanding in the legal world generally talks about things on an aspirational level, talks about intent, okay? So it really is a perfect document for this setting. And so the idea is to go over the highlights, and that this will be written in an actual document. The finance committee, which is comprised of the chair, David, and myself, will work with the Friends of, the board of the Friends of, to put this into writing, and then the board in their next meeting will vote on it, okay? So let's just talk about it very generally. So basically, Friends of LEAP, it's a nonprofit, it's very important, it's a nonprofit, just as we are a nonprofit, and they will be managed by a three-person board. And the members will be, the chair will be David Rosales, and his very excellent credentials are posted. Importantly, he is a CPA, so he knows numbers. And he was a former AVP of a global insurance firm, so he understands liability. Roberto Gutierrez will serve as a secretary. He is also, as obviously, the executive director and founder of our school, so he will be representing the school, and this will be a point that will become important as we continue. And this will be a point that will become important as we continue. Erin Valley will be the treasurer. He is Brooklyn-based architect, understands facilities, has a kind of wheelhouse to understand the kinds of transactions that are mainly facility that the Friends will be helping us with. Again, remember, Friends is now our new landlord for the school facility. Okay, so the most important thing to remember is the mission of Friends. Friends is a tax exempt and it is organized under the charter which recognizes a unique kind of organization. It's called a support organization. And specifically, it is tethered. It is tied to the existence of this school. That's important, okay? So if this school is not around, Friends by nature will not be around. Okay, so it's quoted mission, and again, it's filed with the state, is to support the operation of this charter school by providing assistance with our real estate and facility-related needs as well as fundraising and other such kinds of support. Okay, next slide. So the ways of interacting, how the two organizations will interact. Again, we've just seen that one way is that they'll be our landlord, right? They'll be our landlord for the building. And we, as a school, will be paying them what, what in the industry we call a triple net, a triple lease net, okay, triple net rent, which includes base rent, utilities, facility management and renovations. Okay, and in accordance with this, the school staff, Roberto and his team in the back offices will do all the kind of legwork in terms of the budgets and plans. But that Friends will cover their own overhead expenses limited to their own directors and officers' insurance and standard liability. Okay, so another way that they're going to be helping us is by way of a construction loan. We will be discussing that next in our agenda. But let's just say, any kind of construction loan that involves this facility, whether it's the fourth floor renovation or in the future, near future, the expansion of the actual facility, they will be involved. They will be the borrower because very naturally, they are in privity. They are in contract. They are the tenant of the building with the landlord. Okay, fundraising, often Friends of organizations also provide fundraising support. And that's something that's, you know, that's obviously possible, but that's not planned for right now. Okay, next slide, please. Next. But next slide. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Can you see the next slide?
Yes. So one of the issues that we discussed, and we want to be very transparent here, is how do we ensure that the interests of the two entities are aligned? First of all, by law, as is stated and filed in the incorporation documents of Friends, its stated mission is that of a support organization for the school. It is a not-for-profit, so it is not in the business of making profit for itself. Second, board membership. Friends right now has three board members. And as recently provided submitted bylaws, one, one member of its three will represent the school. And it'll either be the executive director, as currently Roberto, or a school board member. That's, that ratio of one to three is what's required. And we can't have another member from the school. Now, obviously, if the board member goes to five, then I suspect the ratios can change. But right now, it's one to three. And if the school, our school, replicate, grow, the Friends of group will remain, this Friends of group will remain dedicated to this school such that any other schools will have their own respective Friends of. Reporting, so then we will, we will hash out a simplified reporting structure, David, right, and Gabriela. And also the coordinated records and transparency. Both of us will be using the same financial accounting form, Fourth Sector Solutions. We've got Robert Keo, who's, who has been our lead guy. And that will facilitate not only coordination, but also transparency and ease of getting the documents. Next slide. So management fee is a term of art. It's a term of art. Remember, we are paying a triple net lease which covers rent and all these other services we get, right? So Friends, that gets booked, part of that gets booked in its management fee, okay? So over time, that fee or that line item will grow. And that, and those proceeds will be used explicitly and expressly to maintain the facility and manage it properly. This includes, obviously, if we should have utility overruns that are above our budgeted amount, insurance for the building, facility expansion, as well as planning for the facility expansion. The use of these fees will be incorporated in the reporting structure that I had previously just mentioned. Okay, reporting, again, this is a little repetitive, I apologize. We will set up a schedule, whether it's an annual or biannual reporting schedule between the two related organizations. Liability, Friends will carry its own insurance, as we discussed. And they will not have employee-related coverage because they don't have any employees. And at this moment, I am told that we do not have any conflicts of interest, okay? So I hope that helps clarify the relationship. I hope it addresses some of the thoughts we had in our last. But this is a time, if any board member or anyone has something they'd like to raise, that, that the finance committee can take under advisement as we move towards memorializing this in a written document. So anybody have any questions? Okay.
Okay.
So I hear silence. And this is not the silence of the lambs, but this is the silence being a good thing.
I think it means that you've covered a lot of ground here. Thank you very much for, I think this is very clear. And thank you and thank David and Roberto and Michael for all of the work that you've put in to clarify all of these points. I know it's a lot of information for everybody to digest. But I think it is definitely worth it for us to have an ongoing understanding of the relationship and to be able to just have a, you know, a really clear articulation of it codified is helpful. So thank you all.
I want to express that given in this crazy world we're all living in, this is the best practice for the organization. It is customary for our organization to be transparent and to be informed. So we hope this document will do that and this, okay? All right, so should we go to the next item? It's the term sheet I want to see first. Michael, is that okay?
Sure.
Before we get to this, that's, yeah. And this is the May 20 commitment letter. Okay, I'm going to queue it up, okay, while you talk, while you try to put it on. All right, so I just finished talking about how one of the ways that Friends is helping us is working is that it will be the borrower on our behalf of a construction loan, okay? And this construction loan is for the renovation of the fourth floor and related other improvements to the building as required. I first want to give a shout out to David. David's secret avatar superpower is to identify all kinds of financial complications. And David really did a lot in reviewing these documents along with myself. Can you please forward to the actual term sheet? So I should start by saying the documents are still stopped, being, are undergoing their final process of revision. There's about 20 documents. The four that we reviewed are the basic essential documents. And they are the loan document, which basically is the loan document that talks, that allows the La Raza to lend us $1.44 million to the borrower, who is going to be La Raza.
No.
I mean, I'm sorry, to the borrower, which is Friends of, I apologize, for the purposes of renovating the fourth floor and associated other facility work. And the school's responsibility is to act as a guarantor. I want to be very clear. We are not a standard guarantor who will act after there is a default. We actually are acting in step, in some cases a little earlier, right? In step with the borrower, Friends. So we're just going to review the terms and conditions very briefly, just so you, you get a flavor of what this is. I've just told you the borrowers, the guarantor. This is a construction loan, interest only for the first six months. And then it converts into a 15-year permanent loan. And the interest rate is essentially 5.95, okay? There is that interest rate, which is a little formula here based on like the treasury report. But the treasury, but the treasury is so low that, that in all likelihood, 99.9%, we will be at 5.95. Okay, and there's an origination fee of 1%. I should also say, give another shout out to David. David played a big role in trying to make sure that the fees were low. You know, I remember that, David. All right, so let's go on. Amortization just merely refers to the 15-year period of the permanent loan. The guarantee is a repayment and completion guarantee. Again, that word completion, and this will be, we'll talk about our next slide and our, some of our concerns. This is not completion that we have to go build the, this is not a construction guarantee. This is a completion of documents and all those, those, those kinds of requirements, okay? And we're basically on the hook for this, to pay it. Okay, but not waiting for the borrower, not waiting for Friends to do it. We do the first payment, which is by way of the, of the, of the net lease, of the triple net lease payment every year we make to, every month we make to Friends. That will incorporate this payment, okay? Should we go down further? I, I'm not all these points we need to, again, transaction cost, that definitely was David's role, helping reduce that. Continue down. There's no prepayment premium. So if we hit the lottery, we can pay before the 15 years. And there is no penalty for that. Okay, keep going, please.
Everybody go on ahead and start playing lottery if you so desire.
Yeah, oh yeah, and please tell me, I mean, the minute we have questions, please stop me. Right now, reporting documents, so remember, we've got two groups here. We've got the borrower and then we've got the guarantor, which is us, okay? So to highlight, we, the school, have to provide financial statements. And we have to give them our annual budgets every year for the next 15 years. And this, and they have the right, obviously, to review it, accept it. And if they, for some reason, it doesn't meet up with some of the coverage rates, which we'll discuss next, they can ask us to modify it, okay? Also, they'll be asking us for our enrollment because enrollment is a source of revenue and revenue means we can pay our bills. And compliance certificate, meaning we're doing all the kind of financial reporting we're supposed to do, what have you, okay? Loan covenants, we'll discuss this later, but basically, I'm going to give you the, the dummies for dummies version. They always want to make sure, let's just say, you know, your mom tells you, okay, we've got the light bill. It's like $50 for the month, okay? And you're supposed to be responsible for it, Gabriela. But since I don't trust you, Gabriela, you better make sure you have $10 more above that 50 because you always use the light bill too much. You always use, you leave on all the lights. That extra $10 is basically a coverage ratio, you know, it's a coverage. It just makes sure that should anything happen, we've got a little cushion, okay? And then let's continue condition. So we've got to maintain a coverage, okay? We've got to maintain a cushion. And the cushion is different for the borrower than for us, okay? And my understanding, and this is sort of fast forward to you, David, is that we are in compliance with the first two years because depreciation is added back, okay? So there's a whole slide for that, David, you can hold on for a minute. So the conditions are, we don't have to worry about that because you're not, you know, whatever, it is required. Okay, that essentially is the essential terms and, and, and conditions. I'm going to take a pause before going into the concerns that David and I had and how they were addressed or are in the process of being addressed. But I'm going to take a breather and ask if anybody's got any kind of questions as of this moment on that. And please don't be shy, we've got Robert, we've got Roberto, we've got all our brains. No? Okay, I'm going to go to the next slide, which will be our concerns, which are no longer such big concerns. Okay, here. So as I said, we reviewed the documents and again, a shout out to David. I think there's one more, right, right here, stop. Okay, so basically, there are about four or five points, five points, four points. Basically, the guarantee, the documents say a performance, a payment and completion guarantee, I believe that's what it said. And in this case, this is not about us stepping in the shoes of the contractor. This is merely the delivery of documents as needed, okay? So we should have that clarified. There is also-
Joaquin, I'm so, Joaquin, real quick, I'm so sorry to interrupt. We did get a question from one of the members of the-
Sure, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, it was in the chat box. The question is, will any of this affect the school being around to serve students over the next few years?
No, this actually enhances the fact that we will be growing and so we can accommodate a couple more grades. And in fact, I don't want to take away the, the, the wonderful benefit to this is we will have the fourth floor ready. And even though we may not be filling it up yet, it could be available to provide additional spacing for, in response to COVID. Is that correct, Roberto?
I was answering the question absolutely, you have it absolutely perfectly right. We now will have room for second and third grades in the coming year and provide us ample room for all the students coming in.
Okay, so this is a good thing. This is a good thing. Es una buena cosa. Okay, any other questions? Okay, so in, in one of the clauses of the many-page documents, there was a provision for a lender inspection that there would be, the lender would have the right to have an inspector come in, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. David and I were both concerned. Was this an inspection of the facility? Was this an inspection on the way the construction was done? Is this going to be done regularly? How much was it going to cost? Is this like another layer? Not only, it's not, I'm not calling it bureaucracy because it's not bureaucracy, but another layer that could potentially slow down the process or cost us more money. So this is not a facility inspection. This is really to confirm the draw request. And generally, it's limited to, you said you put some walls up. Can I just see the walls? Okay, got it, the walls. They're not looking into how the walls were built. They are not, it's not a facility inspection. It's not a architect or an engineering inspection. It's simply to say, you, this is what you said you did, I can see what you did, okay? The amount, and David managed to find what the budget was, right? It was included. And apparently, it was, it was reasonable. But I, I would like to have that actually given to us, you know, just so we know it. And finally, and finally, it, we, the lender will do this in quick, it should not be delaying our process, okay? This should be pretty much go quickly. Again, Roberto received from the program officer an email. And so we can go ahead and, and Roberto will be happy to give it to David and, and, and whatever, okay? Now, we asked for a side letter or a confirmatory email. We've already got the confirmatory email, but the language will be somewhat fleshed out a little bit in the deal docs, okay? Is that a good thing, David? Okay, coverage ratio. And this is where David exhibited one of his superpowers. Again, this is the cushion, the cushion that I talked about. Again, the lender just wants to make sure we've got a little extra money in the bank, just in case. There you see the calculation is that depreciation is added back, so it's a non-cash expense. And so we should be fine. Our ratio, according to Robert, Robert's there, our ratio should be over two for the first two years. And the, and, and that exceeds the 1.05 requirement, okay? Definition of terms, as I said, these documents are still in, they're, they're, they're being finalized. So there was a couple of cut and paste, things that needed to be tightened. Dave and I went through it. So we're just going to look at them when they're in their final review to make sure all those meet muster, okay? So, um, next, I believe that's it. Oh, here, this is for you, David. This is analysis on the fixed coverage ratio. You can see our net income for, expected for the end of next year is quite small. But you add in depreciation and therefore before earnings, taxes, depreciation, all that, we have 241, which is greater than, two, almost twice as much greater than, 20% greater than, than the $145,000 that we have to pay for principal and interest, okay? And that number gets even better, that coverage, that cushion gets even larger depending on the disposition of the paycheck, whether it's treated, when it's, if it should be treated as a grant. It gets even better if we get some additional funding from, that's the city, correct?
And And we'll, we'll talk through each of these three revenue scenarios as we talk through the annual budget. But just to highlight, if any of those break our way, we will exceed that ratio very comfortably.
That's, oh, I'm sorry, David.
That depreciation, Bob, is on the furniture fixtures and equipment in the school that you've already put in?
Correct.
And you retain that after you sign it?
That's correct. So we, we had a pretty sizable expense as part of our CSP grant this year. And we've also budgeted for FFNE on the school side for some new classroom furniture and things like that, that will go into use, you know, assuming should go into use about August 2020.
Those are not things paid for with La Raza funds, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, next slide. So, um, on this basis, if there are no questions, I, or the finance committee, and that includes Gabriella, David and myself, recommend that the board authorize the entry of this agreement and that the executive director sign it. We would like to see, the finance committee would like to see the documents as they're finalized, okay? But that is the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.